That's why. I know, but it's. I don't remember my login information.
Oh.
I think it's.
There's that.
Fritz updated my computer. And I don't remember my login information. It's all good. I have it in paper right here. Sorry. Okay. Wow. Intimate email. Alrighty, um, let's call this back to order. Uh, do we have anything to report out of closed session? Wait, you said we're on YouTube? We're good? Okay, uh, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
We do not have any actions to report out of closed session this evening.
Alrighty, um. So like I said, I called us back to order, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Altman.
Here.
Mayor Protemenskor.
Here.
Mayor Wright.
Here. And let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The Republic for which stands one nation and your God indivisible, with every young justice for all.
Alrighty, let's enter our public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff uh, for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments shall be directed toward the entire council. And any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. The public is additionally allotted three minutes each in which to speak on any item on the agenda prior to any action being taken by the council. We have any public comments?
No hands are raised online, Mayor.
Alright, no hands on uh, online and nothing in person. I'll close public comments.
Mayor, we do have one hand that that popped up.
Okay.
We have Kathleen Dagnot, and I really apologize for for probably mispronouncing the last name.
Alrighty.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Denault and I am the Program Director for the Victim Services for the Talawa Dany Nation. And I would just like to guess you're going to bring up the um, the proclamation for May 5th for the awareness of MMI P missing and murdered Indigenous people. I wanted to let.
Sorry, glad, sorry.
Okay. I wanted to, that's quite all right here. I would like to let the council know that the um, Community and Family Wellness Victim Services Division is going to be holding a awareness on a wellness walk on May 5th. And we're going to be meeting at the fairgrounds at 10 a.m. and walking to the point of honor and then back to the fairgrounds. So it should end around 2:33 o'clock. If you'd like to bring someone who you know that has is missing or murdered Indigenous people or just make a sign or participate, we welcome the whole community.
Very good. Thank you. I was gonna say, yes, that is going to be item number one on ceremonial items. Yes. Thank you for the information. Anybody else, Mr. Mayor?
No, Mayor. No other hands are raised.
Alrighty, um, let's go to our reports, concerns, referrals, council training directives. Port out, uh, Councilmember Altman. Anything for us?
I just wanted to report out for the Citizens Advisory Committee, um. Pelican Bay with Warden Stephen Smith, uh, current inmate population is sixteen hundred and thirty-four. And um, the warden and the chief deputy warden have um uh, reached out to the Corrections Department uh, to bring some of the inmates up from the Central Valley due to flooding. Uh, so they may fill uh, uh, many of our empty beds at the institution, which uh, of course makes the institution uh, more of a value to the Corrections Department. Uh, number two, the Pelican Bay now has a BA program through Cal Poly. And uh, this is good news because the institution currently has more college attendance than our uh, community. And it's uh, the program is very successful with a high rate of graduations and overall uh, in statewide statistics. Uh, number three, the dog program, eight dogs graduated from their certified training and were adopted and to now part of new families in the community. And then um, uh, of course, I did not attend, but they had lead in on Thursday. I couldn't make it, but if anyone uh on the council did make it, I would love it if you'd report out on that. And then uh, Warden Stephen Smith also expressed his appreciation for the mutual aid from our local um fire and law enforcement departments. Um, uh, he said, thanks for being a good help in every instance. And that's about all I have for that meeting. Thank you.
Your protemenskor?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, on the uh, the seventh had a a joint meeting with other uh, economic leaders uh, with Senator McGuire here and along with some city staff. Um, it was a very good meeting. Um. Learned a lot about some of the things the state is doing to advance the uh, of the the goals of sustainable power, specifically wind power and how that might affect us here. Uh, attended the ribbon cutting uh, for the uh, uh Smart Workforce Center, uh, which was was good. I had never been past the lobby in that building, so that was good to see uh, the work that they're continuing to do in our community. The uh, we uh, I've continued to work along in my role with the Chamber of Commerce in preparation for our next economic summit. It's been several years since we've been able to do an economic summit. Our economic summit is scheduled for May nineteenth. It'll be an all-day event. Um, so we're looking forward to uh, a lot of presentations that will help us uh, all identifies the key components to uh, making sure that we are moving our our uh, economy forward here in Delnar County and City Crescent City. Um, attended a uh, uh, I had my regular visitor bureau meeting uh, last Thursday, Fire Two by Two meeting along with uh, Mayor Wright. I did attend the lead-in um, um, award ceremony. I want to give a a vote of a voice of appreciation to Chief Griffin for taking a a lead and getting that going along with Sheriff Scott and um, I think everybody was there was was glad to see that back, was well-attended. And I think um, greatly appreciated and certainly something we need to do. Um, we uh, the Kamomi Festival was uh, Friday and uh, kudos to our economic um, director and recreation director, Ashley Taylor, for her good work on that. I think that uh, uh, while it was not a perfect event, I'm not sure that it's possible to have a perfect event when you move a thousand kids around or however many we ended up with, but it was certainly a very productive event and and I think that as we uh get set up for a debrief, uh, we'll be able to learn some things from one another and I think that we're going to do an even better job. I will say regardless of whatever, whatever hiccups there may have been behind the scenes, um, the, the general public, the, the, the teachers, everyone I spoke to was just blown away by what they saw and what they experienced. And so while we may get a little stressed ourselves, thinking that we're holding ourselves to a little higher standard or even get a little um irritated with one another, uh, the bottom line is when it mattered, we all came together. We pulled off a, a, a really neat event. Uh, our visitors from Japan, unfortunately, were not able to be here Friday morning. Um, they had the unfortunate experience of of the movie coming into the Bay Area and having somebody break into their cars and steal some of their items, including passports. Um. Give you an idea of the, of why I think it's so important that we continue to build friendships uh, of, of, of a cross-cultural mindset. At the event Friday night, they apologized for missing the events during the day because they couldn't get here. Because somebody stole their passports, but they felt compelled to apologize for missing a part of it. Um, there's lots to learn when we uh, share one another's cultures. There really is, and I think that that's an important thing. They are back home. Enriquez and Takeda heard from them uh, today and are already looking forward to, to uh, what's, what's next? So. I think that's it, Mayor.
Alrighty, I attended that uh, Fire Two by Two that Mayor Protem was talking about also. Um, but I wasn't able to be at the unveiling of the uh, Kamomi mural earlier, but it looked like it was very well-attended from watching it on uh, on Facebook Live. And um, as far as the event with all the kids went, um, I talked to at least six teachers, not just the two that came from my school, but they all loved it. They said their kids had a blast and it was, it was good. So. Um, that's it for me. Um, we'll move on to ceremonial items. Item number one is Missing and Murdered Indigenous Peoples' Proclamation, and I will read that. Whereas Delnar County is home to several tribes, including the Talawa Dany Nation, Elk Valley Rancheria, Urok Tribe, Rezegini Rancheria, and the Talawa Nation. And whereas Native Americans as a whole are under, or sorry, sorry, overrepresented as victims of violent crimes and the United States Department of Justice found that American Indian slash Alaska Native women face murder rates more than ten times the national average. And whereas homicide is the third-leading cause of death of Indigenous people ages ten to twenty-four and the fourth-leading cause of death of Indigenous peoples age twenty-five to thirty-four. And whereas the city recognizes the intergen- intergenerational impacts of years of violence against Indigenous peoples that include trafficking and murder through missions, massacres, forced relocation, boarding schools, widespread removal of children from their families through the child welfare system disproportionately uh, in course disproportionate incarceration, police violence, and high rates of gender violence. And whereas these forms of violence play out to this to this day and directly contribute to issues like missing and murdered Indigenous peoples. And whereas violence against Indigenous people is a severe violation of human rights and the effects range from immediate to long-term physical, sexual, and mental health costs and as well as death for Indigenous people. And whereas advocating and investing in the protection of Indigenous people sets a pathway toward equality, eradication of poverty, economic growth, and overall wellness in our communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Crescent City that May 5th, 2023 is recognized by the city as the National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Persons. And be it further proclaimed that the City Council supports the ongoing work to address the many issues contributing to this tragedy tragedy and be it further proclaimed that the City Council recognizes the importance of raising awareness as it uh, as to the extent that the missing and murdered Indigenous persons crisis impacts our community and local tribes. I swore I practiced that and that was, that was tough, goodness gracious. Um, and I know we have some people in our audience that want to speak, so come on up, y'all. I got. Uh, these, William. Sir, copy of the proclamation.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council. Audience. My name is Philip Williams. Councilmember for the Urok Tribe. Try not to cry because this is the time of healing. MMI P awareness is not about blame. It's about always looking at where we are today and how can we fix where we are going forward. I've lost family members, friends in my whole life. Stories of of uh, Urok women being brutally beaten, raped, and murdered since the beginning, since the eighteen fifties. When colonization started and occup- occup- occupancy of the forests here in Delnar County. But I'm not here to talk about that. You already mentioned it in the proclamation. I just want to thank you for acknowledging because this is all about healing our community. Right? Every corner of this community needs to be healing and we're going to heal that with love. Not pointing fingers. You know, Jesus' whole point was love. Urok people are kind and generous and caring people. You know, we didn't have homelessness in our, in our communities. You know, we always took care of everybody in our village. You know? Me as a, a council member, I would be considered a guardian of the people. I would make sure everybody was taken care of in my village. And that's how I feel that you guys take the action today to make sure that every corner of your city is being taken care of. And um, I'm looking forward to the work. You know, my work is, I have a big job healing people, but I want to bring that message today. It's about love. The mental illness that we see on our streets is because they're not feeling loved. And I think today is a step towards showing the community that we love one another. And that's how we're going to fix the issues we have with fentanyl, homelessness, and rape and murder in our communities. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Rosemary Deck. I'm the Chief Prosecutor for the Urok Tribe, and I've had the great honor of serving that tribe as their prosecutor for almost two years now. Uh, focusing mostly on missing and murdered Indigenous persons and um, that issue broadly in our community. And so I do want to thank you all for shining light on this very important issue that continues to, you know, just exist ongoing in all of our communities, but especially here in Northern California, there's a concentration that doesn't exist of these cases throughout the rest of the state. So knowing that you're aware of it, you're raising awareness, and I hope that going forward, we can continue to work in partnership um, through our justice partners and public safety to really increase safety for everyone who lives in this region, not just the tribal citizens, but also to understand that this does affect members of tribes in a special way that doesn't necessarily affect the rest of the population in the same way. And so shining that light on it is, is really important and I thank you and I look forward to working together in partnership on this issue.
Ayuque, Neknow, Georgiana Jinsa, Neewalek George, Essie Nanas, Oscar Jinsa, Essie Shogon Mewametchak, Essie Turwurak. Ayuque, my name is Georgiana Jinsa, but everybody calls me George. Oscar Jinsa is my husband. I live at Turwur, which is called now the Klamath Glen. I have five children, four boys and one girl. Um, and I was delighted. Uh, we know Mr. Wright as a schoolteacher. And so then when I went to the website, I realized he's the mayor, so that's pretty exciting. Um, and went to my kids, you guys! And he's like, oh, he does something up there. And I said, yeah, uh, we need to have better communication, kiddos, about this. So um, I am delighted to be here tonight. I was thankful to have Councilmember uh, Philip Williams. This is his district. He's the North District Representative. We have a council of nine with seven districts and a vice chair and chair. Unfortunately, I gave them the notice on Friday, so to rearrange our schedules is quite hectic, but Councilmember Williams came because this is his, is his district, the North District, which Crescent City sits in. Um, I wish the other tribes could be here tonight, um, and the other Rancherias and Rezegini could be here because you know, really the cure, the fix for MMI P is to talk about it. And the way that they've been able, the predators have been able to get away with this for so long is because we don't talk about it. Right? We, we talk about our loved ones have gone missing or that they left. Um, there's a lot of terms that are used in our families and in by law enforcement to talk about it, but it's never really what it is, right? They were taken, they were stolen. And so we don't call it what it is and we don't talk about it. And until we talk about it and we say what it is and call that out, it won't get better. And so we have to start doing it and this is the best way to do it, to bring it to a public forum like this and say, this is what's happening. This is what's going on. This is the pipeline that our young men and women are going through. And I'm sure most of you are aware that it started out as MMIW murdered and missing Indigenous women. Right? Because in the pipeline camps, many, many Indigenous women were coming up missing and murdered in and around those. And it wasn't just the pipeline camps, right? We know that it happened in a lot of other places. And so what Indian country also knows is it wasn't just our women that were under attack. It was also our boys and our men. And so as a mom and as a mother, you know, and I have children coming up and they're in the Delnar School, School System. You know, that, that's, those statistics are frightening and they're alarming and they're not getting better. And they should be, right? And so that's something, I have one daughter and four boys. And so the lessons to each of them are the same but different. And so I think about my daughter and I think about that statistic that you started out with. Ten times the rate, the murder rate against Indigenous women is ten times higher than of anybody else. Well, there's a lot of reasons why that could be true. But I think, like I said, we start to change that by talking about it, right? By raising a rare awareness about it, by going home and you talking about it with your family and your loved ones at your couches and your dinner tables and saying, did you know that it's this high? Did you know that this is what's happening to your neighbors just down the road in Klamath, just north of you, right here in your own backyard? Because see, it's not an issue that's happening so far away. It's right here. It's in Crescent City. It's here in Smith River. It's here in Klamath. It's at Crescent Elk. It's at your high school. It's in your elementary schools. And so I just really encourage everyone to look at what's around you, find out how you can help, find out what you can do to talk to your kids, to have your kids talk to their friends and, and make sure that every child, not just Indigenous children, but that every child has someone safe that they can go to. Because that's how we stop this. That's how we fix this, is to give children an outlet that they can go to and feel safe. Thank you again, Mr. Wright, for having me and reaching out to me via Facebook. I appreciate it. And everyone else here, thank you for listening.
Salaha, uh, Shuhushi Scott Sullivan, she do uh, Vice Chairman of the Talawa Dany Nation. Uh, Deden Hayuchi Hot Sista, Disrini's Taaten, uh, Quet, Quetda Sista. Uh, good evening, councilors. Uh, my name is Scott Sullivan. I'm the Vice Chairman of the Talawa Dany Nation. Um. I currently reside in my ancestral village of Hayuchi. And I'm standing here today in the village of Taaten. Um, the Talawa Dany Nation would uh, like to thank the councilors and the City of Crescent City for promulgating this proclamation today. Um, as the other uh Indigenous advocates have spoken to today, the councilmen from the Urok Tribe, it's going to take a collaborative effort between tribal nations, the, the federal government, states, and local governments to, to really reduce the negative impacts that we are seeing in our communities. Um, like others have spoken to tonight, the first interaction that we had with non-natives to this land was one of violence, um, and through a myriad forums that has continued on today. Um, but today is a new a new day for us. There are new opportunities in front of us and it's um, warms my heart to see that other non-native institution governments are really taking a stronger look at this. So again, the Talawa Dany Nation says, shut no harm, you know. Thank you very much.
No hands are raised online, Mayor.
Alrighty, then we will move on to our consent calendar.
Mayor, could I just?
Go right ahead, sir.
I just want to express my appreciation to all of you for being here tonight. It wasn't but just a few years ago um, that um, that I heard for the first time a presentation by our local soroptimists uh, about trafficking. And you always thought that that was something that happened in big cities and on the I-5 corridor maybe, only to find out that it was happening right here in Crescent City. Um. I guess this is just another part of that, that learning, that, that it doesn't, it's not happening somewhere. It's happening here. And, and if we don't talk about it and if we don't acknowledge it, and if those of us who are in positions of of leadership are not willing to, to come to the table and insist that we talk about it, um, then um, it won't get better. And it can't. I, I just have to believe that it can get better if we, if we, if we realize the value of a person's life, regardless of, of, of their heritage, um, and every life matters. So thank you for coming. Thank you for educating me. I, I, it's, this is something that, that I've been on kind of on my radar for the last couple of years of, of just hearing about it, not knowing anything about it. But it means an awful lot to me to have uh, local representatives here come and willing to, to help me learn how I might be able to be an advocate for, for all of us. So I just want you to know, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Righty. Um, our consent calendar, item number two. Um. We have council meeting minutes for April 3rd, 2023. Uh, warrant claims list for March 25th, 2023 through April 7th, 2023. Uh, payroll report uh, for period ending April 5th, 2023, paid April 14th, 2023. Uh, item number five, financial software upgrade. Item number six, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Business Assistance Loan Program Agreement. Item number seven, budget amendment to CDBG Coronavirus Response Mobile Pantry Subrecipient uh, agreement. Item number eight, uh, Washington Pump Station Diesel Tank Replacement by way of Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Item number nine, Fed Under Pool Position Control, uh, add one point three full-time employee lifeguards by way of Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. Item number ten, Letter of Support for Crescent City Harbor District Grant Application for Department of Transportation's Port Infrastructure Development Program Funding. Can save that without any issues. And then I'm stumbling through that proclamation, sorry. Uh, that was a mouthful. Uh, item number eleven, Self-contained Breathing Apparatus, a CBA compressor purchase for the Crescent City Fire Station. Uh, and sorry. Go back for a second. And it's, it's one of those things, because I know Georgiana's daughter. She is the sweetest most just ball of light. She is seriously, she is a, the sweetest little girl. I couldn't picture anything ever happening to that little girl. Sorry. Bringing tears to my eyes a little bit there. Um, that is our uh, our uh, consent calendar.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve consent.
Second. Alrighty, uh, let's take public comment on the consent calendar.
Mayor, no hands are raised.
Alright, nothing online, nothing in person. I'll close public comments and poll votes.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Mayor Protemenskor?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes. Alrighty, we do not have a public hearing. We do not have any continuing business. We do have some new business. Item number twelve, emergency shelters. Alrighty, we do not have a public hearing, we do not have any continuing business. We do have some new business, item number twelve, emergency shelters and C two zone amendments, your staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have Ethan Lawton and Bob Brown with us tonight. They will be, uh, delivering the staff report. They are, uh, contract planners for us for S H N. Sodom has gone before the planning commission and now is, uh, back to you for discussion tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to, I believe Ethan has taken the lead.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, staff and public. Um, I'll be presenting on the C two, um, amendment and I'll be sharing my screen. Here we go. I believe that is visible.
We're seeing something here.
Perfect. Be beeping at me.
There we go.
Okay, um, I'm back, I think it blitzed out. Okay, so I'll go back to the beginning. I think everything's fine on my end now, it froze. And I'm assuming everything's fine on that side as well.
Yes, looks good.
Everything looks good.
Okay. My name's Ethan, I'm the planning consultant, I deal with zoning and ordinances, inquiries, permits, everything planning. And I'll be discussing the C two zoning amendment. A brief background that's included throughout the staff report is that this item was brought up on December fifth during one of these council meetings on the sixth housing cycle. Um, housing element. And there was a discussion around emergency shelters and how it was, um, limited to PF zoning, public facility zoning and how there was a desire to expand it. Then it went to Planning Commission on February ninth. Planning Commission represented information as well as a couple of different zones for consideration. The Planning Commission selected C two zone to allow emergency shelters. And directed staff to bring back revisions to propose to the C two zoning. And on March ninth, those amendments were presented to the Planning Commission. They were reviewed, discussed and approved through resolution P C two zero twenty-three hyphen zero four. To allow emergency shelters within the, the C two zone, um, recommending it to the council. So a little bit of background is that th- this is part of the six housing psycho element, um, which has been submitted to its, its C D and is currently in review. And on January first, there was a bill that became into effect, Assembly Bill two, three, three, nine, which really stresses the emergency shelter component. And then there's the point in time count as well. The few of the requirements that were taken into consideration for the C two amendment was A B, uh, two, three, three, nine. Uh, mainly around four areas. One is around the expanded definition of the emergency shelters. So we added definitions. And that's one of the attachments to the staff report of the definitions that were added. In addition to that, uh, identifying a zone zoning district which C two was selected and is being proposed, um, to, uh, amend to allow emergency shelters. A third component is identifying zones with adequate access and to amenities. And so that played a huge role in selecting the zone. Aside from the other zones that were being considered, because C two is where most of the services are located and it's along, uh, the one-on-one quarter. The fourth thing is the calculation and methodology of determining the sufficiency of site. I reviewed the packet and it seems the old staff report was included and not the updated, but in the updated staff report, there identifies that there are roughly ten acres of vacant, uh, land within the C two. And so it shows that there's twenty-two parcels. And so in regards to vacant land, there's capacity and this is not including sites of commercial structures or, or any kind of structures that are not being used, um, that could be converted to a shelter. And the last thing that was analyzed is the written objective standards and constraints. So we added two components, one to principally allow it and another with allowance with conditional use permit. And that tipping point for either one would be thirty beds, if it's under thirty beds, then it could be principally allowed thirty or less. And if it exceeds thirty, then it would require a conditional use permit, um, through the planning commission. And in addition to adding objective standards, there was language added about um, how long you can stay and stressing the lighting as well as stressing other requirements like parking spaces, which our current parking ordinance does not address this type of use. And adding security as well. Um, so this is part of what was analyzed and brought into the recommended amendments. My last slide just shows the most recent housing cycle, which was the fifth cycle. Uh, part of the goal and policy and action actually helps, uh, all of this as well. And if you see the part that is highlighted, it even stresses that the C two zone was selected um, to add additional capacity. Um, and this was a document that was written quite a bit of time ago. Um, so even in the past, this was kind of identified. Um, and that's how it was brought to um, the recommended amendments to today. And so that concludes my brief presentation and I am available to answer any technical questions and Bob Brown is here as well, and I will hand it back over to the chair.
Mayor, no hands are raised. So yes, we're just looking for direction. Any, anything you want us to change, we could. If not, then we will bring it back for, uh, for introduction at a future meeting.
The only, um, not that it changes anything as far as my, I mean, I, I championed for this, I argued for this during the fifth cycle. So it's part of the reason that it was in there, even though it didn't get actually added back then. It wa- it would be interesting, I think, from a, from a standpoint of, of looking forward uh, for us as we answer questions with our constituents, um, to, to do a little bit of research on what structures are in the C two that might have capacity for a thirty-bed shelter. Because I think that, you know, that would just be, that would be good knowledge to have if somebody asks us, well, so what, so what? If, if this happens, where could this be? Um, and, and so I, I think that maybe for reference standpoint, I would like to have, um, you know, a map that shows where these, where the undeveloped areas are, maybe they could just, it could be just a highlighted thing. And the possibility of any, any structures currently that would, that would fit even be possible. That have anything to do with the, the zoning, but I think it would be from a public engagement standpoint of trying to help educate would be helpful from, from my perspective.
I agree, because I definitely will get the questions.
Yeah.
Very, hear them coming. So I may be good to be to have that readily available. I can save it on my phone. Alrighty. There's nothing else. I sounds like you have direction. I think we're good with that.
Well, absolutely. Sounds like, looks like consensus to me.
Yep, very good.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Um, alrighty, item number thirteen, Crescent City Cultural Gateway and Beautification Project, Clean California Local Grant Application.
Alright, thank you, Mayor Wright, members of the council, and actually Director Jaeger, if you want to maybe pop up with me on this, as this has certainly been a, uh, been a, a project that staff has, uh, been jointly working on uh, with the primary leads being Director Jaeger, uh, Bridget Lacy, our, our grants coordinator and, uh, and myself on this. And so sharing my screen will just, just run through this, uh, real quick, uh, so you can, uh, so council as well as the public can kind of understand exactly what we are proposing and what we're pretty excited about, actually as an, as an opportunity that's, uh, that's coming before us soon. So this is a Clean California Grant Application. Uh, it is due April twenty eighth, uh, so just, uh, just a little bit later in the month. And so we've been working on it for, uh, for about two months now, uh, and we'll give a lot of credit to, uh, to Senator McGuire. Uh, who actually, as we talked about this project with him, uh, has championed, uh, us in this project and coordinated meeting with Caltrans to gain additional partners and it's all been uh, received very, uh, very well from all of our different partnering agencies. So we'll kind of run through that, run through the project for quick. So again, this is a, this is another project that is spurring from our beachfront park project. This project seems to be a real catalyst and has given us leverage on a lot of different fronts. Uh, whether that be the culture center, whether it be the transit, uh, hub or even, uh, even improvements to Battery Point that you see to your, to the west. Or as we'll be talking about a little bit later on, the, this grant application, which is really addressing, uh, the eastern portion and the highway portion for this particular grant. So as we look at, uh, at this piece and what this grant and what we're proposing here. Uh, again, they have the transit hub piece, which is now a critical component as this, uh, vision is all starting to come together. Uh, and so what this grant would be is it would be focusing not on the whole transit hub center, but more the fact that we are going to be addressing this parking near the Veterans Monument, which is where the current transit, uh, location is. And so we would be able to build this first median here, uh, to create this bump out. So the transit could be relocated there while we create parking here near the, uh, near the Veterans Monument. As that future vision comes to, uh, comes to fruition. Uh, there would be future grants and we've already applied for some that would build out the rest of this transit hub. The other piece is the pedestrian accesses that we talked about here by the Veterans Monument, but not only that, in front of the Culture Center. So building this divide and this next piece of Front Street, this Front Street at the end of the summer will hopefully be completed through Play Street, leaving just these last two blocks to create that, uh, again, that, that transition piece. The Discovery Center Accessibility and Cultural Improvements. So again, building off past visions, we had a great public meeting, uh, on Saturday in regard to this particular project. So again, trying to create, uh, accessible, uh, accessible, uh, visitor centers for our community. Elk Creek Cleanup. So this is a, uh, grant application that's about beautification of areas. We have Elk Creek that runs right through the middle of our city, yet it's, it's largely unknown at this point, uh, and, and at times certainly, uh, cleanups can help that area. And then we have the overall vision for the Beachfront Park Master Plan, which includes the dune grass, the birm, trying to create that, that vision of Elk Creek. So it's not just this a tricky turn that you navigate, but it actually is a, uh, is one of those areas that can guide you into the city and welcome you to the city. So then the other piece is these gateway signs. So again, envisioned in the master plan, this would be part of this grant application. When you're coming through, you not only see that natural beauty that we're talking about in the park, but also have wayfinding signs that sort of guide you into this special place. And that in, in a nutshell is what we are, uh, what we're calling the Crescent City Cultural Gateway and Beautification Project, which is what we'll be applying for. Again, it has all the central, all the, the same elements that Beachfront will have, the dune grass piece, the landscape architecture piece, uh, to bring in that natural landscape connection to the redwoods with the park, uh, in there as well. Uh, the Talawa, uh, piece of this, uh, in inclusion is also a critical part. So again, it has that sense of context with the park. So you're not seeing it in the park and it's just a standalone Christmas ornament, as they talk about it, without that theme of the tree. You actually, it goes throughout this entire project, starting at this first joint, uh, first escher piece. Culture Center is, is a big part of this. Culture Center right now, here's a shot of it today. You can barely even see where it's at. It's completely blind. Staircases all over the place, not accessible. Definitely, uh, needs a lot of the improvements. Here's another shot of it. And then here's a shot, and this is, uh, this was first, uh, shown at our, uh, park meeting on Saturday, where those staircases are gone. And there's actually, there's a ground level entrance. You'd be able to park right on the street, right next to it and be able to enter the Culture Center at that ground level. And so this is part of that vision to create that Del Norte Discovery Center. So that this would be that destination and then could really tell people about our area and become that sender. Uh, this would just be the, the landscape piece of it, which we can, uh, pick off in this particular grant. And then there'll be a, a future discussion in regard to the overall center and improvements that are needed, uh, on that front. So that, yeah, like I say, in a nutshell, is really what we're proposing here. Uh, Director Jaeger has worked extensively on the, on the estimate side of things. Uh, which include each of these, uh, different components for a total of three million. Council has any questions on any of the components, uh, or any of the, uh, the things we've talked about as far as this grant? Let us know. Again, it's due on the twenty-eighth. There is a, a zero, uh, match on this. So the, the one piece though, that we will need to be aware of is the timing of this. One of the key components is just how ready we are. Fortunately, we have the consultants on board. We have a lot of the improvements to the street is already through the sequel process. So we've talked to the, uh, we've talked to the Coastal Commission, uh, about this area. They're also very, uh, very uh, excited about this project, uh, and supportive of it. Doesn't mean there that, uh, achieving the cold, uh, the coastal development permit will be easy, uh, but with them, uh, also supporting this and trying to find solutions through this, I think we have a, a, a very good uh, grant application where we'll be competitive. Caltrans is also very, uh, very much in support of the overall project. Not only that, the future vision of daylighting Elk Creek. So that was part of this general development plan. And not only for this first little portion here that we have shown, which is, uh, that number forty-four right there, but also taking it all the way through Elk Creek. So it's not a beautiful natural creek that then is put into a concrete, uh, culvert that runs underneath the highway that nobody can really see. This would actually be a natural feature, uh, for us that we can have interpretive signs, uh, and, uh, and that excites both Caltrans from a mitigation project for future for them possibilities, as well as the, uh, the Coastal Commission with the natural landscape that it could, uh, could produce. With that, Director Jaeger, anything you want to add to?
Well, it's, it's obviously an opportunity. Um, and is the cultural elements is, you can see from the map, you know, we have the basket patterns incorporated into the concrete, um, some clean California elements, the permeable concrete items which they're looking for, uh, there's trash receptacles included in this item. Uh, there's artwork that's included in this proposal, uh. And we've already, Bridget and I have already started to have discussions with Caltrans permitting regarding the, uh, wayfind, the gateway signs. So we're already that, that's, we're already through that process. This is really an opportunity to jump on a plan that's there as part of the master project. And my side, the, the other benefit to me, looking at this and looking at what we're going to do next summer with the, the other monies that we have for the park is we'll be able to really take some of those elements and put them in this, use this funding for those portions. And so the flow between this grant request and the master plan and the extension of the Talawa Trail and cultural elements will be seamless, essentially all part of what we're aiming for. And this is going to get us ahead on the Front Street project. We're not building Front Street with these two with this. Ahead on the Front Street project, we're not building Front Street with these two with this funds, we're, that we're doing these parking elements. And we're not doing the storm brain, but what's getting us. You know, towards the end goal.
That's a good point, so speaking of, speaking of Front Street and what we'll, what we'll be doing, so the, so the parking areas will be developed. So that's really what's in this grant, so building this median, building this parking area. Same on this side, what we, what we won't be able to do is this street portion in here. So there is a storm drain that runs underneath here, so this will be for a future project, so it's almost the reverse of what we did on the, on the western portion of it. Where on that one, we rebuilt the street, this one will rebuild the, the pedestrian portions, leaving this still to be, to be done. We do have grant applications out that could do that, the raise grant is one of those, that would be able to pick off that piece, if not, then we'll be looking for future funding. To complete that piece.
Essentially, I'm sorry, what we're, what we're copying here is we're, we're getting the amenities. Without needing the big chunk of. Funds to fix those blocks, so if the, if we're three years out and getting the money for the last two blocks of Front Street. We've got the amenities required, the end product there. So it's just a matter of taking care of some potholes and. Smooth sailing, so to speak. But we're jumping, this enables us to jump ahead of those projects and get us closer to the finish line. Whether we receive those other grants or not.
Council, any questions?
Just have two, two quick questions, one on the, the wayfinding, I think it's listed as forty-three on the. On the map there. Are we, are we anticipating this being a, a single sided? Arch type feature, there's. Because clearly, at the, at the corner where Front Street Inn is, their building sits. Right at the sidewalk, there's not, there's not space. I, I. I don't think there's space for, for an arch to go all the way across there at that intersection. Without being awful creative. So I, I just, I just wondered what the thought is for that within this application. And then my second question, I'll just give them both to you, is because we're talking about a, a funding cycle that's very similar. To other projects that we have going, especially the Prop sixty-eight funding. Is this, is this done via reimbursement like? Other grants are, 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 can we? I, I know we want this, but, but from a cash flow standpoint, we, we have not. Made a decision yet about things such as bridge loans and so forth, to try to. To make sure that we have the cash available to do all the things that we're talking about doing. So those would just be my two questions, if you could. Answer those, please.
Sure, and good questions, especially in regard to the cash flow, because it is something that as a small city, and with as successful as we have been with. Grant funding that we have, and then also grant applications that we have out there, it is something that we do need to be cognizant of. In this next year's, or in this year's budget, and what we're proposing for next year's budget. Will be a lump sum of, I want to say sixty thousand dollars as this kind of placeholder for the bridge loan interest. And so if we do pick up some of these, and especially the raise grant brings that one into, to more of a question, is that one's an eighteen million dollar grant application? But there's even some of these other ones that aren't street infrastructure projects that are housing projects. We scored very well on the Danco CPLHA funding, we scored ninety out of a hundred. And the, the sort of the cutoff score that they said was eighty, so there's a strong possibility we might get funded on that side of things. So we will have to watch cash flow with this particular one, and I believe.
I believe, I'm trying to get you from saying the wrong. There is funding, you can get funding throughout the project on this, it's additional paperwork, but it's not a, at the end. You, we, we have the ability, we're applying for it upfront. There is funding available throughout the project, so it's not a lump sum at the end.
It's million, million dollars upfront is what we can apply for, I believe. So, so that one will take care of it for this one, but. You're right, though, with some of these other pieces, that cash flow is a, is a concern, in regard to the, the wayfinding signs. Yes, it does get very tight right here, and, and right by the Front Street Inn. But they're actually proposing, and this is the nice thing about where we're at right now, and the consultant team that we have on board. Is we can make sure that this vision does make sense all the way through, and so Director Yeager. Bridget Lacy set up a, a meeting today with Sea Reach, who will be designing this as well as the entry feature on Stamps Way. And they're not looking at a full arch, but they are looking at, at. Probably a, a two-sided structure, so would come up, but probably wouldn't have a full arch is what they're, is what they're envisioning at this point. And so this will need to be moved back regardless, right, unless it's just one-sided, it will have to be moved back, so you do have enough room to, to put it. Within where you want it to go.
We're designed to find her. We are looking at options, I was checking earlier, because literally at four o'clock this afternoon. We're gathering these visions, in addition to the visions we already had from our design team, well, again, hold up, but there are aspects in terms of the distance there. The foundation will be below sidewalk level, these signs will be sitting on a structure, could be concrete, which is quite possible. Looking at doing bastic pattern stained concrete, if something along that line. The columns could be as small as eighteen inches, which would allow you the thirty-six inch ADA pass point on it. So even, even. So that, that is an option, we're working. Through design, so. We could still be with that narrowness there. And, and, and we're also going to have, we're scheduling it now, we're trying to have another discussion this week with the. The key to us and all this is, you know, Caltrans can't give us endorsement of their own grants, but if we can go through the permitting process ahead of time. And so we've had, I think, one or two meetings with the Ryan, who's the. Right away. Permit gentleman that will handle the sign design, and if we can meet with him again and make sure that we're compliant. With what they're accepting, then. I think we can work through that issue pretty handily.
Would you guys say it's safe to say that? We're a couple of years away from discussing a bridge loan?
It, it all depends on how successful we are, so like I said, we have roughly, I want to say it's somewhere around twenty-five million dollars in, in grant applications that are, that are out there. If we, and our, our philosophy has been to cast a wide net. And as wide as we can, and then as we pick up those, because we're not going to get some, we're going to get others. If we pick up the raise grant. And it falls at the same time as if we're building the vast majority of Beachfront Park, I think at that point in time. We would be looking at some sort of bridge loan, the nice thing about those particular grants is neither one require a match. So our bridge loan interest. Would be essentially what our match would be, which would be much smaller than any sort of percentage match on those types of projects. And Ms. Levers is with us tonight as well, and, and anything else you would like to add on that? He's giving the head shake no, which is, I'm not too far off, basically.
Got nothing else?
No hands are raised, Mayor.
I'll take a motion then.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we approve and adopt Resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, a resolution of the City of Crescent City authorizing submission. Of an application to the Clean California Grant Local Program for the Crescent City Cultural Gateway and Beautification Project. And authorizing the city manager to act on behalf of the city for all agreements and reporting documents upon award.
Second. Alright, got a motion in a second, please pull the votes.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem and Skar?
Yes.
You're right.
Yes. Alrighty, item number fourteen, budget request to support city involvement in the Forest Moon Festival.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, we have our economic and recreation director, Ms. Taylor, to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this year marks the fortieth anniversary of the Star Wars film Return of the Jedi. And why that's important to us is that Del Norte and Humboldt Counties were very prominently featured in that film in very. Captivating scenes, particularly ones that took place on in Endor. And so because of that association, the Del, the Humboldt Del Norte Film Commission has, they are hosting a. Forest Moon Festival in June, it'll be on June second and third. And what they are doing is they are going to be arranging for four different showings of Return of the Jedi in, between both counties. And then they are also looking to other partnering agencies to assist in providing other activities that will complement the festival as a whole. And that includes government agencies, nonprofits, business, the business communities. With the end result being something that our whole region can really appreciate and participate in, and hopefully draw some tourism to our, our local areas. So I was approached by a very enthusiastic community member who was very interested in seeing the city be a part of this event. And I've also been in talks with the, with the Film Commission as well. And basically what the Film Commission would like to see happen here in Del Norte County is kind of a mirror of what they're doing in Humboldt. So at Sequoia Park, they're going to be doing a showing on June second of Return of the Jedi, and they'd like to do the same thing here at Beachfront Park. They are also on Saturday, the following day, they're going to have a Jedi. Training course of sorts, and they'd like to see us do a very similar thing here at Beachfront Park. This is something that I think would be a very small lift for us and could have very large benefits. I think it's something we should also encourage our business community to participate in and do some themed activities to. Draw people to their businesses, and so what I'm asking of council this evening is for a small budget of three thousand dollars. And that will help us to buy the materials for doing the Jedi training course, to assist with a couple of aspects of the film showing. In Beachfront Park, and we'll also be able to offer some small prizes to people who participate in the obstacle course. The intention is not to offer anything that would charge admission, the goal really is to bring people here to our community. And for the funding to go out to our business community, that's really what the goal is. So that's kind of where we're coming at it from, and also we are co-sponsoring or would be co-sponsoring the film showing. So there would not be any fees associated with that for the Film Commission. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn that back over to council if you have any questions.
I, I think it's a great idea, obviously, we've talked about this from a visitor bureau standpoint, and, and so I'm supportive. My only question is the, the practicality of, of trying to show a movie. In, in the park. From a, from a light standpoint, we have, we have tried this on more than one occasion. And there's two things that really make this difficult, number one, it's not dark, which makes. Visually, it's hard to appreciate, and secondly, wind. And, and so I, I just think that we need to have. I would just encourage us to make sure we have that, that we, that we make sure the cultural center is. Is open the day that we have this, so that we have a fallback plan in case of. It just not working outside, but I'm, I'm, I, I think it's a great idea, and I'm glad that we're going to be a, a, a part of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I have an outside projector that I use at school, or projector screen that I use at school, and it. Does not stand up very well to it.
So they have a whole kind of tethering system, and the wind is a concern regardless, and it's a concern whether you have great. You know, abilities to tether or not, however, the Film Commission, you know, representatives did come here and. Look at Beachfront Park, and they've scouted the area, and, you know, done their due diligence, and I think that they've been looking at other locations here, and really, it's. Beachfront Park is probably the most accommodating as far as what they're expecting for potential viewers of the film. We really don't know how many people may show to our community, but. This event has been broadcasted in unexpected publications, I mean, it was in the New York Times as a Cliff Note recently. It was in the San Francisco Gate, it's getting a lot of attention, so it's, I mean, if you imagine it's Star Wars, so we really don't know what to expect.
I wonder if we shouldn't just plan it for being inside Cultural Center, because, I mean, you're right, it's going to be. Light until nine o'clock almost.
So unfortunately, the Cultural Center is reserved that weekend, we, that was an initial discussion, was it being showed at the Cultural Center? And that is not going to be an option.
Again, I, I, I think it's a fantastic idea, I, I, I think the challenges of showing the film. The, the, are, are going to be, are, are, are going to be real. And. So I, I, you know, in my, when I put on my other hat as an advocate, as a, as, as a chair of the Visitor Bureau. We need to have this. And we need to, we need to, we need to put our hats on and, and come up with maybe some, some other possible. It's just, we, we, it's just so open. Out there, there's just no, there's no place to hide in Beachfront Park when it comes to, to weather and, and wind, and. That's why when the first thoughts of, of having it out at Florence Keller, even the, the protection from the, the, the trees all around. And, and it, you can, you can tuck into one of those corners and, and, and it's a lot, you can, you know, darken it down as far as seeing. I, I don't think it's undoable, you know, that it's not doable, I just think we're, we're going to have to think through some, some possibilities. So that we, and it's, it's right around the corner. Literally, right around.
Very fast approaching.
But the economic value potentially of people coming here, because it's, you know, I mean, and, and while it may not have the same. Same experience of being in the park outside, I mean, even, even finding a partner with the, with the theater. To, 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 to do it as, and let them, and let them comp the space as a, as a community benefit. Is, is a, just another. I just think we should open up. Our, our, our thoughts to any possibility, with all due respect to Film Commission. You know, this is, we're not in Eureka, the, the, that park setting is very different than Beachfront Park.
Yes, and that.
That amphitheater built and have that, have some of those berms around there will be.
That will be fantastic.
We will be a lot better shape.
Definitely.
Well, as a senior Jedi, I'm, I'm always for improvement.
Yes. And I think Chief Griffin had a couple of things he would like to add as well, because he also had a, a meeting with Cassandra.
Yeah. Oh, wait, no, that's a sip more costume, just kidding, that mine, I'm not.
It's a big difference. I, I'm just going to say.
Start cities, actually, it's not, that would be one, just kidding, highlight. Sorry, I was, my family did Star Wars for. For Halloween last year, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll add a little bit, I did have a long meeting with the Film Commission, also they stopped by, talked about general security of it. The original plans of having different events throughout the county versus then putting in kind of one spot in Beachfront Park, that was where they thought it'd be a little better, and a little more to manage. One of the things they're also talking about doing is actually bringing in. I guess Lucas approved. People in uniform, in, in costume, actual Star Wars costume upwards of. If I remember right, it's about thirty. And so there'll be like actual film stuff going on there, as far as that, people could actually get photographs, everything. There are some, some curious concerns of that, because some of the stuff they use does look like regular guns, stuff like that, so we worked through that. But as far as the people, I don't think you could fit the people, unless I'm completely wrong, I don't think you're going to be able to fit everybody in the, inside the Culture Center anyways, that's going to come watch this. They did a screening, just a random screening, at one point didn't even advertise it of the movie in Eureka, and I think it was seven hundred and fifty people showed up. So you put that with, I know the local following here, I've worked with several people that were actually in the movie as rebel troops. So. That's all I wanted to add, and so we're going to, we already worked on that, pretty simple plan as far as what we're going to do, just same thing we do, kind of Fourth July-ish also. But then they, she was also tying it into local businesses, as Ms. Taylor said, different thing like drinks and stuff like that, or whatever they're going. Although they couldn't call it like a Yoda drink or something, it would, it would be kind of tailored that, that would encourage people to go out in the community and see those different things. Even like the Ewok Rock at a Fordrick Market, stuff like that, so.
Director Taylor, just as a, as another. Thing just to put into your thought process. Six Degrees of Celebration, their largest tent is forty by a hundred. You can put in chairs, you can put a lot of people in four thousand square feet of just un, unhinged spaces and, as just something, I don't know. Be something to, to communicate possibly as a. as a thought, so, but very good.
I am open to all suggestions, absolutely.
How big is the screen that they're that they want to?
Um you know, I am not sure.
Blown up screen?
Um it is, it it I'm not, I don't think it's a blow up one. I think it's an actual, like, it's a stand and it has like a whole structure that it's that it goes on.
We don't know anybody with some big shipping containers that we could just make our own. Seriously, I mean, it would take care of a little bit of the light problem and the wind problem as well.
Well, and they are aware of all the considerations that are at Beachfront Park and are very well informed. So, you know, whichever way they go forward is, you know, is gonna happen. And ultimately, it's a free event to the community. And I think, you know, people are understanding when, you know, people do their best to put forward a good event, we're not charging for it. Um so ultimately, it is gonna be good for the community, even just the effort, I think, put into it.
Happy with colored fog for a lot of years, so.
I don't ever hear anything about that.
No.
Ever.
There is a, there is also a Facebook page for it as well as people wanna check it out, the Forest Moon Festival. It's already listed. You can see all the press it's getting, everything. The meeting the other day, they posted up a few pictures of Beachfront Park and everything in the meeting with me, so.
Good.
It is gathering a lot of attention, as Ms. Taylor said.
It is, and you know, for our business community who do, you know, who who do hear this council meeting, I would really like to encourage them to reach out to Cassandra or to myself if they want to participate, because it is a great opportunity. Like I said, Star Wars gets the ear of, you know, a a very large population, and a lot of people are probably going to come here wanting to to do fun things around that theme. So it would be a great opportunity for our business community to be a part of that and get increased traffic. Um so I definitely encourage them to reach out and be a part of it.
I would very much like to meet the person that controls the social media account. Hashtag Monday Yotivation. I love it. I love Star Wars, so Monday Yotivation.
Could use some Yotivation today, for sure.
Alrighty, um, did I take public comment?
No, we do have some.
Public comment.
We do have some hands raised. We have Angela Greenow.
Oh, Angela Greenow.
Imagine that.
Uh thank you, council members. Uh this is Angela Greenow. Uh so I am one of the enthusiastic community members that's helping put this on, obviously. Um so those are some of the great concerns that you brought up, Blake, of the timing, the lighting and things. And so this is gonna definitely be an evening event. Uh this happens to also coincide with the opening weekend of the Downtown Divas that June, that's their opening weekend. So that was one motivation to put it um down Front Street. Also, as um Chief Griffin has explained, some of the costumers that are participating, they have some very um big requests that we need to fulfill for some of these costumes can range between three to five thousand dollars. And so some of those are like changing rooms that need to be separate and private, um bathrooms that are separate and private for them. And so um to help encourage them, we wanted to find a location that can help with that. Um as mentioned, at the last screening, almost seven hundred people showed up, and so having someplace in Delmar County that could house that many people is a big uh thing. We've talked about like indoor events and spaces and um because it's kind of a casual evening event, they figured an outdoor space where people can like gather and just with a picnic blanket and obviously with a lot of jackets that you need to uh to be able to watch it. Uh the movie theater is actually going to be showing Return of the Jedi as an official Lucasfilm screening on April twenty eighth. The Lucasfilm has released it for the fortieth anniversary all across the world on April twenty eighth. And so um I don't know if the movie theater would be willing to watch it, show it again, because they have to go through different hoops to be able to screen it in their theater setting, um when they had just finished watching it on April twenty eighth. Um but it is a good suggestion. Um other locations we looked at was the Fairgrounds, um but that again was indoor space and just this idea of an outdoor space um seemed a little bit more appealing. The screen is as big as a box truck, so having a something to cover that is is a little bit um a little bit challenging uh for them. Uh they have their own audio, their own screen, their own um cameras and everything to project that. Uh and this is all in partnership with the Film Commission. It was very grateful for them to come up and see the space uh so that they can have a better layout and understanding. That was one thing with the Florence Keller Park was like a great idea, but it was the idea, once we figured out once the San Francisco Gate and the New York Times picked it up, and this is literally trending on the Star Wars Reddit and Star Wars Twitter. And like, it's talked about on Star Wars Facebook groups that I'm part of that have like thirty plus thousand, fifty plus thousand. People are interested in this, and they wanna come, because where else can you go but see it actually where the filming locations happened in Del Mar and Humboldt? Um so that's the big challenge is, we don't know how big we're gonna get, but we wanna make sure that we're accommodating um safely for everyone to be able to see this film. And it's gonna be a different movie experience. You're gonna be outside watching it. If you wanna be inside watching it, well, you can go to movie theater on April twenty eighth. But this is definitely gonna be something different outside. Um we're discussing with, as we said, costumers, possibly having performers um to do like live orchestrations, talking with food vendors, and just make this a big celebration of Del Mar. I mean, I'm gonna be honest, that's the reason why I became a Star Wars fan, was knowing that people in my community made this film just made me so proud of this community and why I absolutely love the film. So as you can tell, very enthusiastic. I hope you support this, and I hope that we can make this great and amazing so that at the fiftieth anniversary, when we have the amphitheater and the trees and everything and a beachfront park, it'll be even bigger and better and more amazing. Uh thank you guys so much for uh all your help on this.
Yeah, she said a different uh a different type of event, and that I I mean, it's it's true. I I think of living in SoCal and going and watching the horrible movie in a in a graveyard before, like, you know, uh I Rocky Horror Picture Show, so. I I I liken it to that, really, so um not nearly as uh popular, so um but um cool. Uh is there any other public comment?
Uh there is uh one other hand raised, just coming in on what Angela was saying there a little bit. I think she's actually sent an email today that I saw, the wastewater treatment plant as far as if there's some, I'm assuming this is their customers to those about thirty people that have these specialized suits, that might be a good location to uh to offer for them to get changed. Facility and they have bathrooms and whatnot. It's a good idea.
Yeah, I thought it's a good idea.
So we have Valerie Starkey with her hand raised.
Hi, it's Valerie Starkey. Um I just wanted to um support this idea as well. The county has already approved Florence Keller Park for the movie screening, but what we are realizing is that the, even if it's just at five hundred people, that the area of Florence Keller, which would have been an ideal location cannot accommodate that many people. So we are hoping that the city will pick up this event and have it at Beachfront Park. I want to assure you that uh Cassandra and her team came up last Thursday when it was windy. They purposely came up for when it was windy um so that they could see if this was something that was gonna work. And the screen is is a blow up screen, and they're talking how they're gonna tether it. Um so they're they're really knowing what they're getting into. They'll be providing the sound system. They're providing all the copyright laws that go along with this. So this is just a real great opportunity to do something in our community. And as Ashley stated, we are working with local businesses. We're going to make it a week-long festival. You know, we've already ordered through the chamber, uh big blow up, so C three P O and R two D two have already been spoken for. But we'll have Chewbacca and Stormtroopers, and they're gonna be located at various places around the community. We are working on, I meet with uh Lynette Braylord and Cindy Vosberg on Wednesday for us to kind of talk about how the business section is going to be going with that, because we do want to encourage businesses to participate. We think this is going to be a very beneficial shoulder season event for the community. Because of the interest, we're going to draw people in from various places. So businesses are going to get a real like nice boost in the arm to go into the Fourth of July, because this is is essentially a shoulder season event. So I am hoping that the uh City Council will support the request from Ms. Taylor tonight, because I think that will be beneficial for the kids to have a Jedi Training Academy. Uh but also fund things that are not uh too fun to talk about, but porta potties and uh various other things. So I just wanted to hope that you'll support this uh request tonight.
Thank you very much for your public comment, although you said that the kids, I don't know how I feel about that, because I need to work on my lightsaber dueling, so. Um it's just for the kids. I don't know if I can accept this. No, I'm playing. Um council, anything else?
With the uh seemingly the 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 ever increasing interest that's happening sort of in a very organic manner, I I'm wondering if if three thousand dollars is is sufficient. I mean, if you're talking about about seven hundred people uh showing up, you know, you're talking about a little over four bucks a head. I don't know what it costs to put this on, but uh 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 obviously, there's 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 costs, and we don't um I I don't want, I don't want to get have to get into this and then go, okay, well, this is more, now we gotta wait till we can get back to the council meeting. I I I would, I would rather up the the budget a little bit to make sure that we have enough uh funding to to put on a quality event. And I think that even if we spent five thousand dollars, uh the 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 ROI on that, the return on that investment with people coming in here and staying in hotels in June, we're gonna get that money back uh that and sales tax revenue. So I I would, I I'm fully supportive of it, and I appreciate the fact that they were up here on a windy day and they do this. So I I I'm just, um but I I would certainly be supportive of 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 us increasing that budget a little bit. Make sure that we can put on a quality event.
Um that three thousand, what what exactly is that for purchasing?
So it would be materials for the training course itself, so to ensure that we can provide quality um experiences, obstacles, and um different activities, and then also prizes, not huge prizes, but you know, reasonable prizes. Um and then also supplies for them to be able to craft things like an imitation lightsaber or something of that nature. Um and then also the porta potties are a pretty good cost of that, that'll cost um close to five hundred dollars just for the porta potties.
So then just twenty five hundred dollars for lightsaber materials, prizes?
Not exactly. It would also, it would be all of the materials that go into the obstacle course.
I'm saying that's not a lot of money. Twenty five hundred dollars for the potential of a lot of people being here. I I would worry that we would run out of lightsaber-making materials.
That's, yeah, I think that's part of the reason why the price tag is around three thousand. So I'm sure we have enough to do that. So I mean, but I I agree that if we want to accommodate the potential number of people who are coming, then it will be reasonable to um.
Have you, um, Ms. Taylor, have you, have you thought about any of your uh any of your marketing money towards towards this event at all? I know it's, in some ways, it's marketing itself, but I I think that there, if we're going to do this and we really wanna get the best return, then then we need to, we need to find some kind of marketing component ourself that's specific to to the event. And I mean, we could easily spend five hundred dollars right there with a with a really good marketing piece. Uh I I I just, I I I would feel better if we if we, uh cause I I know, I know our, I trust our staff to be to be uh judicious with with the funding. I I would feel better if we set it up uh not to exceed uh number a- and make sure we have the budget to do this, to do this right. And I I would feel better about a not to exceed five thousand dollar number to make sure that we're cap- capitalizing on this once every forty-year opportunity.
Yeah, Mayor, right, if I can, just a couple, couple more questions, as now this has my attention even more than what it did previously. So the the five hundred, that's for two porta potties, is that correct, for hand wash station? I think Fourth of July, right, I think we have at least six, if if so. It's probably gonna be more like a maybe a fifteen hundred dollar uh porta potty expense, somewhere somewhere in that range. And then what about trash? Have we thought about trash and a dumpster, a solid waste? Um been a part of this at all? So i- if not, we probably need to to think about getting a dumpster uh and a fairly large one. I mean, this is
Yeah.
This is going to have, you know, a very large crowd.
I agree, and I I'm appreciative these things are coming up right now. Part of why not all of this is thought through is because this just came to my attention. I wanted not, I wanted to make sure that council was approving of us moving forward with offering this event before putting a lot of time and energy into figuring out how to put it on. So I think that if we had a reasonable budget that includes trash pickup and porta potties and materials, that that would be more than sufficient and um could put on a very fun afternoon for our community and travelers.
Thank you for saying community and not kids.
Community. It'll be a family affair.
Uh yeah, I I'm, I I think we need the 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 costumes to go up for sure. Um yeah.
I I think that and and you you you're gaining that experience, obviously, of working with our with our uh local Chamber of Commerce and with Cindy Vosberg, and and I I think that we have some real opportunities, and she certainly can be uh a a resource person for all those things as far as identifying numbers of porta potties we use, you know, for Fourth of July, Sea Cruise, you know, comparable type events where we bringing lots of people into into the park as well as of the partnerships and sponsorships that we've uh taken advantage of through our with Recology uh and Hambro and through the Solid Waste Management Authority, so. Uh yeah.
I wanna raffle to win a Baby Yoda Lego set. That's what I want.
On the list now.
Or Mandalorian helmet, one or the other.
Angela Greenow does have her hand back up.
Let's let's have her talk again.
Only if she'll not sound excited about it.
More enthusiasm, Angela.
Love the raffle ideas. Uh so part of the advertising, thank you, Blake, for bringing that up. Um one thing the Film Commission did say is they're kind of being that hub of sharing what events are happening. So um we will definitely share what's happening here in Del Mar with them, and they're creating, they also have a website in addition to the Facebook of Forest Moon Event, um Forest Moon Festival dot org, um to share all of that stuff. And so I I love the idea of adding to make sure that everyone is advertising on this uh so that people know about what's happening. And as um Ashley said, we just found out about getting approval of this like late February, early March. So this is going really quick of planning all of this of what's happening. Uh so we are gonna, she, they're gonna be advertising for sure outside of the area, but anything to help locally. I know I've been speaking with people locally about the event, and they're so excited. And if there's anything that like turned out with these certain events that we've had, like with our Sister City event that we had on Friday, our Halloween event, pretty much every event that the city has done, there's always been a great turnout locally. So now just imagine internationally, it's gonna be amazing.
We are establishing a good track record for events. I just wanna point that out.
You know what? That like thirteen thousand-piece Millennium Falcon Lego set, that would be even better.
Just send me some links.
Uh we can turn it into a fundraiser. A dollar a ticket and it'll pay for itself.
There you go.
Buy a couple hundred tickets, so you know, it'll be all right.
We haven't even the public comment. You reel the mayor in.
You have public comment, do you have anymore?
No.
A dunk tank.
I'll close, you can dunk the mayor pro temp. Perfect. I'll close public co- oh comment. We got a hand back over here.
So we have to be clear that this, the Jedi uh training course is gonna have to be limited. We're gonna have to limit participation. It will be necessary, so. We won't be able to accept every single person who wants to participate. We won't be able to accept every single person who wants to participate. However, the draw itself will be good. And also, um, the Film Commission, they're talking with other um vendors who just in general want to be part of the event. Maybe there's not room for them in Humboldt and they may come up here. So there are going to be other um things in the park that day other than the the training course. So I I see it being a little bit more bustling than just our family activity.
I know we're firstly in the police department, gonna be planning for another Fourth of July, basically. Um, cause I would, I would be surprised if it doesn't end up being at least that big. And if we plan for it and doesn't happen, okay, but I there's a lot of potential, even just what we do daily here with the visitors, the amount of visitors that come to this area anyways on a yearly basis just to see where Star Wars was filmed and be in the area is tremendous. It's a large portion of it and the other movies that are here, but it's a very large following. It's there hasn't been a single year that's gone by at all that I haven't, I mean, at least a few dozen just the eye contact, you know, so it's it's got a potential to be pretty, pretty decent size. I don't want to go too far, but that's what we're gonna be planning for is another Fourth of July day. So.
When I, when I did maintenance for the National Park Service, uh, I used to always see campers coming in a- around this time. Always. It's true. Totally forgot about that.
Alright, so from a protocol standpoint, I'll ask uh our legal counsel to uh to amend this, the the resolution, uh can we simply uh use the same number and amend the the dollar number on it in the motion? Alrighty, then I would make a motion, Mayor, that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty three. I'm sorry, Mr. Weird, did you have something else? Okay, twenty twenty three dash two six, a resolution of the city of Crescent City amending the fiscal year budget twenty two twenty three uh with a not to exceed amount of five thousand dollars.
Alright, I've got a motion. Second.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
They are pro ten score?
Yes.
You're right.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
So pulling the mayor card. Hey, uh, excuse me, little kid, put that lightsaber down. That one's for the mayor. Thank you. No, I'm sorry. I'm playing, of course. I'm still not playing. Sorry, sorry. I know, I'm I'm too funny. I'm cracking myself up. Alright, let's um. I've I've been a Star Wars fan my whole life, so I love Star Wars. Alright, uh, council, city council items, legislative matters. There actually was something I was looking at, but it it's, it just got introduced, so I'm gonna wait, give it a little bit longer. But uh, C manager report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, just want to commend uh staff as well as council for this past uh couple of weeks. It has certainly been busy around the city. Uh, so this last uh week, we had a Measure S committee meeting and they adopted the resolution for the recommendations for next year's budget. So a little over two million dollars of recommendations from Measure S for police, fire, streets and our pool. Uh, that was followed by like uh Mayor Pro Tim and and the mayor also mentioned the Fire Two by Two meeting, which was very productive. So we have direction uh there. And then the Kamome event. What a huge success, I think, for our community. And I can't say enough about our staff. I mean, each and every one of them played a significant role from, you know, Director Jaeger to our Police Chief Richard Griffin. We had a fire chief there. Fire uh Department was representative of Public Works staff. It was an all hands on deck event for Public Works. So we had a Public Works throughout the uh throughout the event, making sure it went well. And then our lifeguards even also got in the fray, uh, but it would not have happened and would not have gone as well uh without uh Ashley Taylor on our staff taking a a lead role and then all the all the partners. Uh, Supervisor Starkey was huge on that event, as well as Cindy Vosberg in our chamber. I mean, it it really took everyone to bring this uh together. Uh, and our mayor Pro Tim uh was also key uh in this uh in this whole event from the planning all the way through the explanation of the mural to roughly about seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred uh kids. And it was uh, it was really a a great event and I think spoke well for our community all all the way through the entire day and the relationship and and really how powerful it is and what a uh what a important relationship it is on just so many levels. From emergency preparedness uh all the way through just the uh story of hope and friendship uh that it really uh that it really uh brings attention to. And then on Saturday, uh, we followed Friday up, which was a long day uh for staff with another long day on Saturday and which we uh met with the public in regard to Beachfront Park. And so our consultants were in town. We talked about pump tracks and all the the different nuances of each of those and the possible designs and the different amenities that that they can have. Uh, following that was a uh a meeting in regard to Kid Town and the expansion of Kid Town. A lot of great feedback from the community on that and and what they wanted to see in that and how they really wanted it to be unique to our community. Uh, there's a lot of community appreciation and pride for Kid Town and how it was done. But they want this to have also a sense of context that you just can't find in any other park that you can only find here. The one that ties into a lot of those things that we've already talked about tonight. And then a great meeting in regard to the Culture Center. Um, and so Councilman Altman was there for the uh for the first uh couple of meetings and then Mayor Pro Tim was there for the last one. And again, it was about our community, the opportunities that are there, a lot of excitement with the partnership, state, national park. Again, Cindy Vosberg represented uh the chamber was there and uh and a lot of just potential that is right there in the in the bones that we have in the Culture Center that is currently really underutilized and what it can become and represent uh as a part of this integral piece uh of Beachfront Park, our community and how it can tell that story and really be that experience for our visitors. That was the the week of first city staff.
Alrighty, um, council, everybody got anything else? Already, um, I had one thing I was gonna ask. Um, our event we had down there were third, fourth and fifth graders. Is there any talk of making it an annual thing, talking about, you know, tsunami awareness and general preparedness?
Abs- absolutely, and would love to receive council feedback in direction as to uh if you would like to see this as an annual event, you know, and some funding for it that we can bring forward with at the budget workshop.
I I think um personally, I think if you were to go back and do it, maybe not be all three of those grades. Kind of how we have fourth graders that do swimming every year. I think it might be a lot for and then I want to say fifth graders go out for water safety. So maybe third grade every year goes out and doesn't. I I don't know. I have whatever you guys think is best, but um, also fewer people might make it easier to manage as well, might need a little bit less staff. Um, I I said, I don't know how everybody feels about it, but I that's what I would, I would say. Um, pick a, pick a a grade and then that's kind of work with the school district, see if they're even interested. You know, make that a uh, like I said, like swimming essentially for fourth grade and water safety for fifth grade.
Um, I I think it would be fine to have annually, but maybe just uh stagger the grades. You know, not all at one time is is very overwhelming.
Yeah, that could, that could work too. What do you think about that idea? I'd be fine with that, so.
Some of that is is obviously from a transportation standpoint, when buses are coming from a school, it, you know, it just but I I think logistics i- is something that 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 we're still gonna have to work through. Uh, I think there's a learning curve that goes with that. I think the value of 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 an annual event that continues to um, we we've, we've, we've tried in years past to um, to really highlight things like the Tsunami Awareness Week and none of our of our attempts really have latched on to becoming an annual thing uh as far as disaster preparedness. Um, we sort of have tried a lot of different things. This seems to be a a kind of a way to to have a hook as well. And I know that that uh from a standpoint in my other role was as a board member for the the Kamome Foundation, um, we had lots of people ask us. Um, um, I guess because they the 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 connection was that 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 now that there's a nonprofit for this, that that somehow we were doing this and we weren't, but but I think that going forward, having having a nonprofit that takes a lead role in in a portion of it and take some of that load off of the the city um is is a is a good thing. I mean, so you can have the the city, county, uh office, emergency services, school focusing on one part and a nonprofit that's taking the lead and taking some of that lift for some of the others. But everybody that I talked to wants to do this again. Whether that was for the kids, whether that was for the the events to the point of already talking about uh introducing tyco drums into the middle school and trying to have a a by the time by the time we have this next year, that there would already be middle school students who could perform. So obviously people are thinking that 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 this is something that needs to to keep happening. So and I I I don't dis- disagree. I think it it won't be the same event. But it can be something that that has continuity moving forward and um, so I I think it's, I I think we need to plan it as part of our, as a part of our budget process, that there will be some cost associated in having an annual, some kind of community event in in April. Um, and we need, we need that that shoulder season event. Uh, I mean, we have a lot of people who come in because of the, because of J C's, you know, basketball and that fills a lot of hotel rooms and 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 we get a a a a benefit from that with with T O T and sales tax revenue. But uh, it's it's not the same as an actual event that that generates. Um, I mean, you you only come if you happen to have eighth, seventh, eighth grade, you know, basketball player. Uh, so um, I I'm excited about it. I I think that that being able to put at least some kind of budget towards this going forward is is a really good idea. I don't know what that number is, because I don't know what our I I I don't know what our expenditures were for the uh for the, in the Culture Center thing, but whatever that is, we certainly need to have that amount in our budget.
Okay, we can uh, we can sort of brainstorm and then we can bring something at our at our budget workshop as far as a dollar amount. The other comment I heard was also creating more of a festival type of approach. So this was great for the kids. Uh, you know, all the third through fifth graders, which like you said, did create a lot of logistical um opportunities for us to sharpen our skills for how to manage, you know, a thousand kids all embarking on the Culture Center all at once.
It's actually impossible to manage a thousand kids at once. It's true, but it's okay.
But it was uh, it was, yeah. Yeah. Uh, overall, though, it actually worked out very well. And so again, hats off to to Valerie, to Ashley, to Cindy, right, for for trying to organize that that chaos that it was, but it actually was really good and everybody enjoyed themselves. But, you know, more of a a festival type approach for the community too with with vendors and you know, face painting, right, boat making for the kids. I mean, you see it in other communities where you can bring in all a whole uh slew of nonprofits and really turn this into a an event the whole community looks forward to and and brings in tourism in one.
So something I'd like to see and it kind of goes to, what is it, May, May fifth, Day of the Child? Children's Day. Sunday fifth.
I believe so. Yeah, so May, May fifth uh with Japan is Children's Day, I believe.
Yeah, so having like one of them cool stations, then making the win- win sock uh uh fit uh coin of Ari. That'd be cool. I don't know, just another extra thing, but that'd be cool. Alright, very good. If there's nothing else, I will uh join us to our next uh regularly scheduled meeting, Monday, May first, six P M right here at the Flynn Center.